Evening, like to welcome everyone here to the Cadillac Planning Commission meeting here for April twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen. If anyone has a cellphone, if I could please bother you to make sure it's off, so it just doesn't disrupt Judd back there in the corner with our videoing. Other than that, if I could have everyone join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, we did that and did that. Ah, Mr. Wallace, sir, could we have roll call?
Filkins. Smith.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Schickel.
Here.
Gregg.
Here.
Fent.
Here.
Valentine.
Here.
Putvin.
Here. Thank you, sir. At this stage, I need an approval of this evening's agenda here again for April twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen.
I move to accept it.
Well, seconded by Mr. Fent, Mr. Smith.
Gregg.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Schickel.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Filkins. Putvin.
Yes.
Okay, before I, before I get a quick approval here, I'll just throw in their notes, I guess. For those of us that follow, for those of you that follow us, we did not have a meeting in February or in March. Just to state that. And now I need an approval for our last meeting, which was on January twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen. I need an approval of those meeting minutes, please.
I wasn't here, of course.
Nope, nope.
Well, seconded.
Nope, I need a first, so you're firsted. Mr. Valentine and seconded by Mr. Peterson.
Okay. Fent.
Yes.
Filkins. Schickel.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Gregg.
Yes.
Putvin.
Yes.
Okay, this evening, we have a public hearing. We have a public hearing to, to consider a request from David Knoff, who is in our audience this evening, for a special land use for an indoor auto repair located at five hundred North Mitchell Street here in Cadillac, a site that is Zone B three, general business. Before, I guess I open public hearing, I'll turn this over to Mr. Wallace for a moment.
Uh, yes, I'll, I'll give you just a, a brief synopsis. You all have my written report and it has all the photos. I think I'll just rely on the photos to kind of talk about the essence of the staff report. The site is within the Downtown Development Authority. It is on the north end.
And that's, that's of the American Legion, so I, I.
Right, I'm gonna talk about some of the things that are surrounding it.
You're, you're sure.
And it's in a area of the downtown where it, the development has quit being all compressed with building to building to building. So it has that going for it, that it moved from an area where it might not have been appropriate because of the density of development. Uh, the density is loosening up at this point in the DDA district. And there are some other uses that are somewhat similar in nature to this particular use. And you see here, you have the American Legion Hall. You have, uh, Speed, Speeds Automotive Supply, Pelz Appliance, uh, just to the southwest of the site. You have the Mitchell Street News and Video directly across the street. And you also have the Hunan Chinese Restaurant, uh, immediately assorted to the west and northwest of the site. Uh, to the direct north of the site, you have two pubs, the Mitchell Street Pub and the Cadillac Par- Party Lounge. Uh, the, uh, these two lounges use a lot of the parking that's located adjacent to the site. Uh, this is actually the frontal view on Mitchell of the proposed site. As you can see, it has a overhead door and then appears like on the right side to have probably more of an office area for the building, if that's correct. Uh, the back, uh, there are four parking stalls. It's my understanding it will be available for the direct use of this facility. I understand there's going to be two service bays. So if there's at least one person in working on each bay and, and there will be an onsite manager, so you will have probably need for three parking spaces, uh, potentially on a regular basis. And, and with the use of four space, I think the parking is going to be sufficient for, for this particular use. Uh, I included this shot, it's of a parking area adjacent to the building, only to show the connection between, uh, the parking lot that's being used or dominated by the two pubs adjacent to, or to the north of the building. Uh, that, that area, uh, you know, would not be readily available without competing with those bars for parking. And I think there's lease arrangements and different things going on. And so you'll see in, in my recommendation that I was recommending that we limit the approval to this type of auto repair business, because, you know, what you get a lot of times with general auto repair, where they fix your car, they get backlogged and people drop off cars and you could, you know, you could have a stable of vehicles there. You could easily have, you know, four, six, eight vehicles sitting around the site. And without working through the parking shortage that that would create with these two, two bars to the north, uh, I didn't want to have us approve a general auto repair as part of the special use permit for that very reason. The, uh, looking to the report. Uh, and I, I always restate all the standards that our ordinance calls for, for the special use. And you'll see them in italics in the report. Essentially, uh, you know, my answer to each of those questions is that this use satisfies all those standards. We, uh, I find it compatible with the adjoining land uses because of what's been there in the past. We have the facilities to, uh, serve this particular use. The, uh, demands for any public services, uh, they're all there. We obviously have the fire capacity, uh, different ways to, to, to serve the land use. Uh, the land use is, uh, consistent with the, uh, long-range plan. And, uh, one of the final ones is a fence requirement, which in this particular case would not be needed since there's nothing, no use going on or no children on the site where people would have to be protected. So I find it to, uh, easily meet, uh, those very, uh, specific standards. And I, I would, from my perspective, not see any reason from, uh, looking at the master plan or land use in this area not to, uh, recommend it. I'm recommend, recommending a, uh, motion to approve, uh, limiting that to the type of s- uh, do-it-yourself, uh, repair that he's proposing. Also, uh, with the condition which the applicant has stated, that the four spaces behind the building would be available for his business use, just so that we're assured that there's that minimal base of parking that will be available to this business.
That would be part of his lease, then?
Uh, right, that, that he have the available, availability of use for that. And, uh, let's see. And, you know, and then the final thing is just that, um, the wording be for do-it-yourself repair, not general auto repair. He has indicated that he wants to close between five and nine PM in the evening. I don't know if you want to cap the lateness of the hours, uh, for any reason. If you did, uh, it seems like the applicant would be fine with nine PM. But if you don't see a need for that, then there would be no need to do that. I just don't know if you would see, start to see a compatibility issue if the, the hours ran, uh, too late into the evening or into the wee hours of the morning. But he's indicated that, as of this point, a nine PM close, uh, would be sufficient, uh, for his days of operation. And so that's basically it. Um, you know, if, if you're inclined after the public hearing to approve it, you can look to my recommended motion as a starting point. And if you wanna add or edit that motion to your liking, uh, feel free to do so as you think is appropriate. But that's essentially my report.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Wallace before we open public hearing, anyone? Good, okay. Uh, at this time, I'll go ahead and open the, uh, public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this, please come forward and state your name. You may write your address on the paper without telling us. Uh, and welcome, David.
Hello there. Well, I'm still in the, in the early stages of this business. To touch on the, the parking situation, there are four spaces allocated in my lease directly behind the building. But those four spaces, they're, they have signage that say for the party lounge and will be towed at owner's expense. Considering that the owner of the building I'm renting is the father of the owner of the party lounge, we have an agreement that if I need to put cars there, you know, he's not going to tow them. And I don't think anybody gets towed from there, not since I've been there, anyway. It's just, it's all a bluff. The, the kind of business this is, is I have daily rates and weekly rates available if you wanted to rent a space and take your time with it. But for the most part, the idea of this place is for you to go fix your own car in an hour or two and then get out. I'm not, I'm not getting in the habit of storing cars. I, I, I have no plans of turning into a repair shop ever. This is a, this is a place, an alternative place to go for people that go to the eight-part stores that are in Cadillac, six of which are on the same road. People are buying auto parts here because they're all still in business. But they're having to do it in the mud, in the snow, in the rain. This, this is a place where they can go for a low hourly rate, rent my space, work on your car, and use all my tools for free. It, if you need specialty tools, I'll get them from Autozone. Instead of you renting a torque wrench for a hundred and ninety dollars and then getting that hundred and ninety dollars back, you tell me you need a torque wrench, I pay a hundred and ninety dollars, charge you five. I keep the five and I return the hundred and ninety dollar torque wrench when you're done with it. So it's, it's not a business to become rich. It's a business to help the community and ensure that I can provide for my family comfortably without having to work for the man.
My only question is, if I may, is that coming from a long line of family members and myself that work on automobiles, I just wanna make sure that in instances that you're overcrowded or have a lot of business, that there aren't people wrenching on the cars in those four parking spots or in the middle of the road. I wanna make sure that it's kept inside because we'll get complaints.
Right, no, that's, that's the reason why tho- those signs for the, the party lounge are going to remain there. Because it's going to be, if you absolute, if we have to get you off of that lift and push you out to the street until tomorrow, on a case-by-case basis. I mean, I've got people that have given me their business cards, mechanics on the fly, you know. Uh, one of them here in Cadillac is, uh, I can't remember the name of it. Anyway, they, you, you call them up and they'll come fix your car wherever you are. They got a van full of stuff. I've got their card, so if people get into a situation where they can't get out of, they can pay somebody that has nothing to do with me to, to fix their car and pay him to do it. But there are, because I, I had to plan for worst-case scenario, so that's what I did. As far as, one of the concerns somebody had was, uh, well, what if I break one of your tools? Two words, Harbor Freight. You break it, go get me one from Harbor Freight, replace the one you broke, and we're good. I mean, I'm not working with snap-on tools. I got Crescent from, from, uh, Menards in Big Rapids. I got Craftsman from Sears. It, they're quality, but the stuff that you get at Harbor Freight, if it breaks, you just take it back and they give you another one. So, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not that concerned with it. The, the idea is simple. I, thirty dollars an hour gets you lift, fifteen bucks an hour gets you space, and you use all my tools for free.
How many lifts and how many spaces are there total?
Two lifts, two bays.
I could have used your service forty years ago when I changed the starter at ten below zero.
You don't wanna know how old I was in forty years ago.
Yeah, he wasn't a twinkle. So your, your hours of operation, I caught the nine PM that Mr. Wallace gave us, but what, what, what are your proposed hours?
Uh, at the moment, and I conducted a poll on Facebook to determine if the reason why I haven't had any customers is because of my working hours. I was nine to five Monday through Thursday. But then it concerned to me, then it concerned to me that, uh, a lot of the factory workers and things that get off at five, they're getting off when I'm closed. So we, I found a middle ground. Now I'm open Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, nine to five. Wednesday, Friday, Saturday, nine to nine, so twelve hour day. Keeping in mind, it's just me. I don't, I can't afford anything. I can't afford employees and whatnot, so I, it's nine to nine, three days a week, and then Sunday, eleven to five, just for the people that, you know, it's a Sunday and something broke on their car and all the repair shops in town are closed. I'm, I'm there for you between eleven and five.
Is there an insurance factor that you need special attention?
I had, I had the, the lawyers at King and King here in Cadillac draft up a liability waiver. The procedure, when you come into the, when you initially come in, I take your driver's license, because if you're repairing a car, you better have a driver's license. Uh, I make a copy of that driver's license and I have you fill out the, the three-page form that is you waiving your liability for any injury upon yourself, your vehicle, or the three other people that are authorized to be in that area with you. And all three of them have to fill out this form. If they're under the age of eighteen, the parent or guardian has another form that they fill out waiving my, the, my liability on them. And it says in no certain terms that, uh, you can't even sue me for anything. And if you try and fail, you will be liable for the court fees that I had to pay to defend myself. So, and I make that very clear. But it's not something that you're gonna get bogged down with paperwork every time you come in. You do it one time, and that's the reason for the driver's license. The next time you come in, I say, John, you look familiar. Pull you up on the computer, there's a picture of your driver's license. You show me your driver's license again, it's the same guy, let's go get you a spot.
Uh, you mentioned up to three people in the zone, so I take it a guy can come in and say, my two buddies are helping me?
Yep, and all three of them will sign the waivers.
Uh, kid factor, you mentioned anybody under the age, and I'm sure you don't want little kids.
No, absolutely.
Running around that place. I'm sure you've covered that base as well.
Correct. When, when I say under the age of eighteen, it's, there's not going to be any kids in there at all. But, but if, if you have a seventeen-year-old teenager, the teenage girl, for example, that doesn't know how to change your tire and you're doing that as a family bonding moment or what, teaching her how to change the oil, whatever, there, there had to be something that covered somebody under the age of eighteen and I checked that box.
Kind of drainage is in the floor of those bays?
The same drainage that was in there in nineteen oh six, whatever, when that thing was built.
Somebody pulled a plug or a hose and the drains on the floor goes down in the water table or it goes down to a pit, do we?
I, I imagine wherever it went, when it was the, the Transit Authority, when it was first built, when it ran gray buses, uh, Greyhound buses and dial-a-rides and, and all of the, the whole shop in the back used to have, and it's, after pulling up some of the carpet that people put back there, uh, it's easily noticeable. There's, it used to be bays that they would drive over with grading and then you walked under it to work on the, on the buses. But they've since filled all that in with concrete. So wherever those drains went back then is still where it goes. But I have oil recycling. I've, I've got one of the big twenty-eight gallon canisters on a pole with, uh, a transmission funnel, the thing's this big, and it sits on top. So you can drop the entire transmission, uh, filter, drop the whole pan, drop the fil- and it's all gonna be in this, this big square. So nothing, nothing's getting on the floor. I mean, there'll be a little bit of stuff on the floor, but nothing hazmat needs to concern themselves with.
Yeah, the city actually owned that building for a period of time. Actually, our city engineer Bruce DeWitt managed that building when it was a dial-a-ride in some years past. So, um, it's possible we could see what he might know about it as well.
Right, because if, if, right, does it go into a storage facility that he doesn't know?
Well, there is a basement and it doesn't go into the basement.
Basement's under the whole thing or just the office?
Just under the office. But there's, there's no evidence in the basement of lines carrying drainage into anywhere. It's, it's all water and air down there.
It's a good question, John, though, even though they're not purposely gonna do it, but still, yeah, where does it go? Is there something that Dave should be aware of that he's gotta maybe check if it gets full?
I think that'd be.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Have any drains in the floor?
Yes. Big old manhole covers.
You haven't popped them yet?
I don't wanna, I don't wanna know what's in there. Find, find bodies and stuff in there.
That is a good question.
Yeah, no, I agree, that's a good question. Yeah. The city inspection or something of answering that for staff, sure.
Is there a, uh, an inspection the city does, uh, on this or no?
It wouldn't be an automatic inspection. Um, the, um, if he were to be changing anything out, it would certainly trigger an inspection. But I think you could always have the drainage way it's set up evaluated and, and as part of this approval, if you thought that was important.
Seems like there should be blueprints or city plans or something that mapped that out.
Bruce could crawl down in there and take a look.
Yes.
Mr. Maury's the owner?
I would ask Mr. Maury.
He may not know.
Well, you know, you hear it all the time where somebody, there's an oil spill and they look and there's a five-hundred gallon tank underneath the building that nobody knew about.
Nobody knew about.
You know what, what typically is done is if something, some things that aren't critical for safety, if they were meeting code when you put them in, they're good indefinitely. Possibly in other cases, you know, if it's affecting a real safety issue, it might be something that it's not good forever and you have to bring it up to code. But as a general rule, when somebody buys a building, they don't bring everything that's deficient in the building up to code. But if this is being, if this is a key factor in, in granting a special land use permit, uh, it, it makes sense to do that.
Again, since it's never come before the city to be used in this apparently form, I think it was a good thing to get answered, yes. So I'm on board with John about it, so. Good information to know, so it's good information for Dave to know. It's not his building, he doesn't know.
Not yet.
Right.
Hope, hopefully I can purchase the thing when.
Great idea.
When I start getting customers.
And they wanna check on where that oil's going.
More than three. Well, again, he's capturing or trying to, but if somebody goofs, it's going down, right, great, we would like to know where, yeah.
It goes into the, uh.
Well, there's, I wanna send that down to the boys at the.
Water treatment plant. The, the historical use for that building has been for, for repair of things.
Agree.
That, that doesn't mean it's not a problem. It just means that nobody's brought it up.
Nope, nobody's.
Because in the nineteen fifties, who cared about water and oil mixing together, yeah.
They separate, don't they?
I took my motorcycle over there to have it repaired a couple of times, so.
Okay, and you just spilt it all over the place, didn't you?
No, they did it, not really. I think it's a great idea.
I do, too.
I agree with Joe, but maybe not forty years ago.
I can't even find the starter now.
What, that one from forty years ago?
Have you had any, um, contact from the neighbors, you know, probably half a block away that's residential, yeah?
Yeah, actually, there have been a, the, the house directly behind me, that guy has come over. He's, he said, so you, oh, you, you have a, a tire busting machine. I got one of the old gas station-style tire busting machines. They, yeah, one of the cheap, right. So I got one of those, he saw that and he goes, uh, so how much do you charge just to use that? I said, uh, fifteen bucks an hour. It's like, well, like if I brought a pickup truck full of tires and rims, because they, they just wind up in my yard all the time. I. I didn't know how to respond to that. You have tires and rims just showing up in your yard and he wants to bring them into the shop and is, is that like, oh, I, it fell off a truck? Is, I don't know, I don't know what his deal is back there, but he's, he, he's excited about being able to take all these magically appearing tires and make some money out of them, so.
I guess, tires end up missing, we might let law enforcement know it's over behind him. Oh, okay. Guess I'm good with the hours and don't see any issues and stuff.
As far as the hours, are, were you thinking about putting a cap on it? I, I only ask.
I mean, party is not gonna be horrible because the buyers don't get in full swing during a lot of your hours.
Right.
So a lot of that really isn't gonna be an issue. I guess a hem and ha, you know, nine at night, although, uh, I guess if the garage doors are down, I could hear like an impact, something going the other day, but it was nicer out and I think the door must have been open.
Yep, door was open.
I could hear that. I don't know how that would travel at night.
It'd travel a long ways, I think.
Well, you know.
Quite likely.
So.
The, the reason why I ask is, is once I become, and this is me wishful thinking, once I've become kind of a staple of the community and people are, are so familiar with me, I'm just that place, when people come to O'Reilly's, Speeds, Advanced, Autozone, and they're like, is there any shops in town that can, I'm, I'm pulling this RV trailer from down south up north and my hu- my wheel bearing just went out. I'm broke down on the side of the road, is there anywhere I can go? They can call me and I'll open up the shop for them to get them in and get them fixed and get them on their way. But if you put a cap on my nine o'clock and they call me at one-thirty in the morning in the rain or in the snow and have nowhere to go and have to wait till Monday, they break down on a Saturday afternoon and it's, everything's booked up and we can't see you till Monday or two, I, I would just like the opportunity to. I, I would just like the opportunity to be a resource for people that find themselves up at Proverbial Creek.
I don't see a problem with just staying open on the weekends like you mentioned. I mean, next door, I mean, the three closest neighbors stay open till two thirty, three o'clock, I think.
Right.
And if they got bands, they didn't hear an impact wrench at all.
But there's neighbors that are right across the alley from.
Well, there, but if you, if you live behind a bar, you, that was a choice you made a long time ago.
Loud noises at night up, up until two o'clock in the morning are, are kind of, you, you're used to it at this point.
I guess I, right, if you ain't gonna make a habit of it, I don't see, you know, and I guess we'd have to feel that if it became a, an issue. But at this stage of the game, correct, those bars can be very, I, I know Mitchell Street has live bands, back door's wide open. Uh, and they're not getting flagged, so.
Do you keep the overhead doors down when people are working on their vehicles?
I will, considering Michigan is mostly winter, they will be down most of the time.
Right.
But for the two weeks of summer that we get in northern Michigan, they, they'll be up to, to let cool air in and to let exhaust fumes out and things of that nature.
You could just crack them, you wouldn't have to pull bar them too.
Especially after like nine o'clock or something.
Yeah, right, right, yeah. Okay.
They were concerned about the neighbors if.
I do, I agree.
Added noise, I know they have noise there, but we're concerned about added noise.
Well, I, I used to live half a block away from there. And I could hear the noise from the neighbors, your neighbors quite often, they would be out in the parking lot. You know, there is pretty vocal with their language sometimes, very offensive.
Oh, yeah, al- alcohol has that effect on people.
Beside, who's driving, Joe?
Okay, anybody else, anything else for David? And if not, I'll go ahead and close public hearing. Well, actually, I'll see if anyone's here to speak against it, but if we're good, okay, all right, perfect. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. I'm pretty good.
No, hang, hang.
You want to vote it, you wanna know?
Yeah. Please wait for the outcome, gosh, you know, we don't.
I would like to eat, but that's okay.
We don't get company very often, man, so.
Well, if we have questions, you're here.
Yeah, okay, all right, so, uh, moving right along, um, on our public hearing, if there are anyone here to speak in opposition of the proposed special land use permit here. And that being a no, uh, we will go ahead at this time and close the public hearing and we can discuss this then. Public hearing now closed. Well, we got a mechanic down on my right, so your input, good, bad, okay?
I think it's a great idea. I, I think that, I think some of the sound issues are gonna be lessened by the neighbors that he has that we know of. I, I think that my, my one concern still remains valid and that is that I think that there should be mandated that the repairs take place inside and inside only. Uh, cause I all, I know what O'Reilly's and I know what all those other places look like on a weekend, everybody's outside in their parking lot, wrenching on the cars. But I like a happy medium as well, and I think that during the summer hours, I think maybe around seven, seven thirty, we make it a point to have those doors shut if they're going to be in operation. I think there should be a point where those doors should be down. That's the only thing that kinda left open, but those air wrenches are gonna be pretty baffled by everything else going on in there.
Agreed. Kevin?
So do you propose a motion then?
Yes, absolutely, I propose a motion.
Always thinking, buddy. Well, no, I, I opened it up for you.
I guess I'd like to see the doors closed by like nine because.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think we should make any changes in this hours of operation.
No.
The evening hours are probably prime time for having that type of work.
Sure, you're a nine to five guy, hey, it's gotta be after. Okay.
So can I approve it?
Well, slow down a minute.
I like this guy.
I know, man, he's on the go.
And I'd like to have in there something about the drains being checked by the city.
Yeah, that, that.
Yep, I would agree there.
So did anybody write this down?
John's writing away, I'm, I'm watching, John. John's getting her for us. Uh, your outdoor lighting, sorry, we didn't ask about that. I, uh, never been bothered by it. I don't think you've added anything new, right, David? Okay, so I don't see that to be any.
Not many spotlights out back, people work on their vehicles or anything, are they, it's gonna be inside.
Correct, that's, uh, that's even his game plan or otherwise, yeah, how do you charge? They're just in my parking lot. No, he doesn't want them there doing that, so. He doesn't make money if they're in his parking lot. Okay, Joe, you good?
I'm good.
Okay.
Just go, yep.
David? Now we'll entertain the motion, I guess.
I approve it.
Well, no, yeah, we gotta get you broke in, we gotta get you broke in.
Can we get Jeff in the middle, please?
So, so, okay.
Hours, what do we say for hours?
Well, he.
Doors closed by nine o'clock.
Everybody good with that?
Good with that. Special exceptions of after hour emergencies.
Sure.
The doors closed or the facility closed?
The doors closed, I, you know, if he's inside.
That's all, he can still work, we're not shutting him down.
He can operate whatever.
He can operate, I don't have a problem with the hours as long as he's.
So you're not gonna be out there at, start up at five o'clock in the morning and then you start nine to, to whatever, you already told us your hours in operation.
Unless he had an emergency that somebody, blah, blah, yeah.
It's, it's not, that's not gonna be a problem, what's gonna be a problem is he does it all the time.
Agreed.
Cause then they're gonna come back and visit us.
I can assure you won't be all the time, because I'm gonna charge more, if I gotta get out of bed and open up.
What else did we say? We said.
Drains charged.
The drain, drain system, you wanna know what and why?
Where?
Where?
Uh, drains, nine P M, close the doors.
You, you want me to read it? I got it all down.
Perfect, cause Kevin is drugging over here.
So the motion would be that the planning commission grant a special use permit to Mister Knopf to operate an indoor do it yourself auto repair business at five hundred North Mitchell, subject to the following conditions. That the drains be reviewed and evaluated to meet city codes. That repairs that happen on the site happen inside the facility, inside the building. That the, um, overhead doors, uh, are down by nine P M. That the biz, that the special use permit would be for do it yourself and not extended to general auto repair for any other future use. That the, uh, four spaces, uh, behind the building be available for the business use. And, and that's it.
Questions, Dave?
There, that's what you said, right?
Yes.
Okay, now I need a second on what Jeff said. Okay, second by Mister Schickto. Okay, roll call, please, Mister Wallace.
Uh, Schickto.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Vilkins. Valentine.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Putvin.
Yes. Okay.
You have your permit.
Congratulations.
You can go eat now.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, David.
I'll contact you about having somebody, uh, you know, meet with you to check out whatever drain. Pardon?
That inspection, does that cost money?
Well, let me, let me see how, let me see, let me see how, how.
You have somebody, you lease it, you don't own it, right?
Right.
So that person.
You might flash it by the landlord.
Cause he may know where they go, but that will save you the problem.
Correct. Cause very possibly they can address someone within the city of this is the answer.
Well, I, I would feel better if they haven't changed since we were managing the building and, but I need to start asking questions.
Yep, okay.
So I'll, I'll, I'll start with people that know the building and we'll just move step by step and see what happens.
So he'll try and stay on the free side of.
Right, right.
Okay.
All right.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business, there is nothing, old business, nothing. Uh, board member comments, hope everyone had a great Easter. Um, I do not know if anyone here can answer for me the, what this new proposed business tax is about. I was hoping the mayor might be here that I.
I can try. I, of course, I, I didn't draft it, but I've been present at a lot of meetings where it discussed. It's essentially an attempt to fix what we've always been doing, but to, I guess, try to fix some of the things that haven't been working with it. We have always required as part of the licensing for buildings to be inspected, but unfortunately, there was never a schedule. And it was many times too often relied on, uh, for the people that sought the inspections and, and were trying to play by the rules. Were doing it and other people were not. And it was understood that it's an important thing to have happen in the community, but because of limited staff, the, the attempt to be in every building every single year was not going to happen as part of the annual renewal. So the goal would be to prioritize the building inspections in line with the degree that they po- posed a potential threat to health, safety and welfare. Uh, say bars with kitchens and chances for fires and a lot of people being in there would be in a higher risk category. You know, maybe a, a low key office building would not, you know, so there would be these three tiers. And the inspections would be set up to have the high risk businesses, uh, fall to a priority schedule on a annual basis. And that some of these other uses might fall to a second or third year. Uh, now again, it's all, those are goals, those aren't mandates. The, the fire department will try to be in every building within three years. It's not guaranteed, but that, that's the attempt to, to do that. And the goal is merely to protect, uh, the health, safety and welfare of the people, the building, the property. Uh, when you look backwards in time, when we've done a lot less inspections, we've had higher property losses, higher destruction of property. So it's, um, and the fees, um, the fees are not a revenue producer. In fact, my guess would be that they won't even cover the actual cost of the staff time to go in and do the inspections. They're just an attempt to get some revenue back to assist with that ins- inspection process. So, you know, it might be that the fees, you know, might cover half the expense, three quarters of the expense, something like that. Uh, so it, it's not, it's not the city putting a, a new thing in place to try to raise money. It's trying to, uh, manage better what we've always been trying to do and maybe we're falling a little short with and putting it back on a more stable plane where we could predict what's going to happen and have a little better defined parameters for how it should happen. Taking into account that not all businesses offer the same risk in terms of their, their building and what they do with their building. So that, that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Said something about a hundred dollars for either a new business, fifty for established or something?
Right, I think a, a very first, a very first application would be a hundred. I think subsequently it would be, uh, fifty dollar fees. And I think the other thing that they, they will do, because we can't be in the buildings, I think there is a, um, there's a self evaluation. Every business will be sent a, a one or two pager saying, have you initiated any major cha- changes to your business? Things that might wanna trigger us to say, you know, we really should, should go in there sooner because, you know, these major changes were made. But if no changes are made and they were inspected, you know, two years ago, three years ago, whatever, then there's probably not that priority to go in and accelerate the, uh, examination of that building. So there will be this kind of annual, uh, self evaluation. Are, have you done any major changes to the building? Are you planning any major changes to the building? It's also to help us get ahead of the curve and help them not fall, stumble and fall because they initiated something before checking the rules and then found out after the fact that they did it not according to the rules. And then we're locked in this problem of how, how do we resolve it, uh, because they didn't follow the rules. Which, which we obviously have from time to time. So it, so it's also an ability to try to be somewhat proactive and advise them in advance of doing things to make sure that they don't get off the path in terms of how they should be done.
See, well, we were inspected last fall. Which surprises, cause we really hadn't been, but, and, and we needed to comply with some things. Meaning that we had some cardboard, if you will, uh, storied stuff up on top of racks and we had to get that lowered. So, and they, they came back and did our re- redo over and we, we complied, we, we, you know, and I seen their logic if a fire happened and stuff, so. But then I seen we were gonna get charged now for stuff and.
Do we have to hire somebody to do this, or is that, that person currently within the, the staffing?
Well, the inspections will be done, um, by the fire personnel.
Correct, that's who did ours. So they came through our entire building.
Well, I understand, but what I'm asking is if they're already getting paid, why do you have to pay a, a fee to have that done? Wouldn't you wanna do that to keep your businesses safe? I, I, I'm just throwing that out, I mean, I'm not a business owner, I'm just curious.
Well, it's another service and like all services, you have to decide whether the entire public will pay that service or the people using it will use that service. And of course, that's always an ongoing debate, what is, you know, a, a special assessment and, and what isn't.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I.
I've heard some talk about it and a lot of it wasn't real happy and I just, that's cool, I mean, if it's paying.
Likewise, well, likewise, all the owners of rental property pay for the inspections. So not everybody in town has to pay for the inspections of the rental property. It falls to the people that are, you know, profiting from running that business. And it's, I guess it's in the same vein as, as, as that.
Which, since you hit upon that, that, that B and B thing you were talking about, see, they, they don't pay for inspections, uh, and stuff. Well, some of these people that were advertising their place that they could rent right on the internet and boom, people come in and here you go. And they, you know, it's, uh, this was part of what I think you had on your plate someplace.
Well, yeah, very much, so, uh, our research continues and, uh, very soon we're going to release a public outreach program to start trying to determine public sentiment on this issue. Um, you know, the most common name people know is Airbnb, but there's V B R O and there's other services as well. I guess the whole topic area is called short term rental housing. And so we have to deal with the turn, with that subject matter across the board, no matter whether it's Airbnb or somebody else, or, or somebody that doesn't fall into any of those names.
Right.
Can they do it? How often can they do it? At, what is the cap on how, how often or where they can do it? And all those types of things. And so we'll probably be issuing a survey, uh, maybe Survey Monkey or something like that. So the whole community can go online, take the survey and give their thoughts on, uh, how open we should be to these concepts. Because, you know, there is no one way to do it. I've looked at many, many, many communities and they are all across the board. Some people outright ban it, some people are extremely open to it and allow it in many places and everywhere in between. And so we just have to try to figure out where we should be on that spectrum.
Your neighbor renting their whole house out for the week and they come up with forty people and just take over.
There was just a lawsuit by somebody that did just that. They, they had a house that was on the canal or whatever you call it. And people were renting out the house and they didn't want that to be like that, cause they come up and.
Yeah, right.
Raise holy heck, track through their yard and stuff, and I don't have a problem with what they're saying.
There.
And they went against, I think, the planning commission and, uh, I don't know what. And they went against the, the, I think the planning commission and uh, I don't know what happened with it, I remember hearing it.
It's an extremely complicated subject.
Right.
And that's why the more I read about it, the more involved it seems to get and the harder it seems to simplify it. Because thi- think about it in terms of, somebody may be wanting to do it almost anywhere but the industrial area. I mean, almost anywhere in town, well, are we going to turn the entire residential part of town into a business district?
Just, would it bother if somebody rented it out?
Would it bother me to run it out or my neighbors? Depending on what, you know, I, I've heard horror stories and I've heard good stories.
Correct, correct.
I can tell you when mo- many times, well, at least when the entire house rental um, takes place. Uh, in most cases, one of two things has to happen, I mean. Uh, usually the owner needs to be in town and available, or there has to be an uh, in town management agent. And those, either, either the owner or the management agent has to be responsive, you know, to deal with issues on that unit. Every single day, and uh, there's none of this, I'm in California making money off a house in uh, Cadillac. And if you're gonna do that, you can do that, but you're going to hire somebody, you're going to pay somebody, that if a neighbor has a problem. Anybody has a problem, the police have a problem, that there's somebody you can call and get instant uh, feedback from.
Non-site owners are a lot different than an off-site owner.
Oh, heck yeah, 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 yeah.
Lots of issues then.
So, um, and, and we'll, we'll package a lot of information. We'll try to break it down and give it to you in digestible pieces that, uh, cause otherwise you can, you can just get lost in this information.
It's growing.
And, and then, you know, if you try, if you wanna treat each one differently, it gets extremely complex. And so I wanna try to see if we can't put them into little groupings and, and try to somehow simplify how we think about it. And uh, but I want to get public feedback before we even start proposing things. So that we're at least in the general realm of the acceptability of where the public thinks that we should be.
Good. Thank you for that.
What's going uh, into the highway building? Uh, there's been nothing uh, specific that signed a lease yet. Uh, things that are being looked at are uh. Possibly a banquet facility that you could lease out for parties. Uh, I don't know if the catering, whether the cooking would come out of that building or be uh, brought in. But that's one type of business, perhaps a coffee sandwich shop. You know, that's another idea that's being looked at. But, you know, there's, there, the owner's looking at a lot of different things right now. And um, also possibly looking at uh, investing in the uh, the Olson Block as well.
Heard that sold.
Well, there's a tentative sale on it to the same person. And I think they're just working out final details to it. And I think a lot of it's just depending on what, what the ability is to get a certain percent lease up. To uh, have the final price work out. So if things go well, hopefully that would happen and then that person could then work on trying to have both developments reinforce each other. And uh, create more value in both blocks as opposed to only controlling one piece and not the other. And then something happened on one side that doesn't help what happens on the other side. So there's a lot of exciting things happening with that. And as soon as we get something a little more solid, you know, we can uh, come and give a presentation to the planning commission. As to kind of the direction it's going, there's, there's even some talk of pops, possibly uh, uh, unifying the two blocks. Into kind of a campus uh, to allow uh, more development and more density to happen in the downtown. And more business use, so uh, it's, I think, an exciting opportunity for the city if it's handled the right way. And um, we have a lot of people working on trying to uh, make sure that it happens in the right way. And with the right uh, design parameters.
See, they cleaned up around that building, Bob probably planted those trees. At least, it draws more attention to the building though, my opinion, but anyway, okay. Any other board member comments? Good? Take it, no communications, sir?
No.
And our public left us, so there's no comments, no other business, if everybody's good, we can enjoy the evening and be out of here, thank you.
Sorry, I got a little excited on the approval there.
Oh, well, hey, you were.